Okay, folks, let's get this regular meeting of council underway, Tuesday, November the 14th. We are missing one of our council members this evening. Counselor Chong is off on an approved leave for this evening's meeting. Looking for approval of our agenda?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Public participation time, so I will ask the member of public if they have anything they would like to bring to council or step up and say.
Yeah, I just, my name is Peter DeSager. I represent 643 Latoya Road, which is the Olympic View Golf Course and development land. I just have a question with regards to the tree bylaw that's going to be maybe passed tonight. And is, and that's if there's been a analysis done on like the cost of implementing it, and is that a cost benefit or a cost detriment to people at Callwood?
Okay, this is just a comment time and not a Q and A, Peter, but that is taken. Thank you very much. And we'll just move on with the agenda. Mayor's message, a few things to start off with. First off, Counselor Day and I were privileged to attend the Callwood Firefighters' annual dinner and awards and presentations last week, and so I'll give Counselor Day a moment to make comment, but it was a wonderful event.
Yeah, just to let everyone know that there were four new firefighters who received their appropriate and proper badges, so they finished their first levels of training. And there were a number of presentations for certificates of achievement. Some of the volunteers at the fire hall have completed oodles, of course, as so many that a few of them needed more than one slides full of listings to count off all the things that they've accomplished this year. We had a number of firefighters receiving years of service awards, including our own Greg Chow, who's been with the Callwood Fire Department for 35 years. And so he's been with the fire department so long, he said he used to ride his bicycle over to the fire hall when there was a fire call because he didn't have his driver's license yet. So it was pretty exciting and a real privilege to be there, getting to know all the people who give back so many hours and so much of their lives to the community of Callwood. And so it just felt very privileged to be there and see the tremendous family that the Callwood Fire Department is.
Thank you. Remembrance Day ceremonies were on Saturday, and I and many of the members of council were also in attendance at various services throughout the area. So we took our time to represent the city wherever we could possible. So thanks to council for all of your commitment on doing things like that in our community as well. The other thing that I have here, it's getting into that time of year where we have to look at any appointments for various boards or commissions that we might have at hand. And what is before us this evening is an opportunity to get one citizen director for a two-year term that would begin this coming December through, as well as a citizen alternate director for a two-year term. Both of those positions need to have somebody in them to attend the meetings at West Shore Parks and Rec. And any of the, anyone interested in the community may submit applications to City Hall, attention to Pat Van Buskirk. The other one is our advisor, our newly formed Advisory Planning Commission does still have a volunteer representative shortage, so we are looking for someone in our community. They must reside in the city of Callwood, 65 plus to serve on this commission for a two-year appointment. So again, those applicants can make their way through to Pat at the city of Callwood, and we will be looking after getting those people appropriately positioned on the committees. Anybody else on council with anything for the last two weeks? Nope, social season is upon us, folks, so be safe out there. Some, two sets of minutes for adoption, regular meeting of council, October 23rd and November the 2nd.
Move adoption?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. A number of minutes for receipt, official community plan steering committee, July 20th, Advisory Planning Commission, September 13th, Heritage Commission, April 12th, and Heritage Commission, June 14th.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Correspondence, folks, 5.1, we received a letter, Citizens for Safe Technology, if you can look to your 5.1 document. Just a reminder to members of council that FCM is working with the Wireless Telecommunications Association. It might be of interest to ask for an update in that regard. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I was, would like to move that the letter be received and that a letter be written to FCM to ask for an update.
Second or? Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out to council and members of the public that regulation of wireless harm, site location and so forth is entirely outside of Callwood's constitutional rights. The FCM is addressing the federal government on this issue, and I think that is the appropriate place for it to be addressed. I support this.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Second letter on our agenda is a letter from Island Health Chief Medical Officer, Richard Stanwick, in regards to air quality-related health concerns due to domestic wood burning and backyard burning.
Move receipt, Your Worship?
Second.
Counselor Day?
A question on that, I believe it is the CRD that does the air quality monitoring, so I'm sure they have also received this. So it'd be, I think, worthy to somehow monitor our air quality over time so that we can compare. But I think we have some very responsible citizens who, you know, have endorsed, you know, the banning of backyard burning. And I certainly live in an area where there are wood stoves, but they're usually very, they're newer and they're properly maintained, and I don't see that the smoke is an issue in our neighborhood.
Good, thank you. Counselor Martin?
Thanks. I'm not going to support the motion only because I would actually like the second option where Island Health came and did a presentation to council, so just to be clear why I won't be supporting the motion.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. 5.3, a letter from Capital Regional District, CAO, in regards to a request to local governments to identify lands in the capital region that could be made available for affordable and market rental housing purposes.
Move receipt, Your Worship?
Second or?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Day?
I just wanted to point out, there's a few benefits to some of the programming that's available with this. So while we might not have land that we specifically as a city want to identify for a project at this time, there are a number of benefits that are available to people signing on with the, maybe that's the next.
I think that's the next one, Counselor Day.
Never mind.
However, on that track of things, I'm just wondering council's consideration around potentially having our communications department list these things, because as you mentioned, we are a little bit land poor as far as places in Callwood, but maybe somebody else has got something in there. So that's always something that we can add to or make a second motion in regards to posting on our website, so.
Yes, Sue, you would prefer to address that at the next datum?
I think it's inclusive of both.
Okay, so, so my, yeah, the mayor and I both talked about this, possibly having communication on our website to identify this as a possible partnership opportunity for landowners in Callwood, so, you know, developers who may want to bring this forward.
So we can take it as a separate motion that it would incorporate the two letters? With that, the original motion on the floor, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? So the second letter is, again, a request to local governments for proposed sites in the capital region that could accommodate the province's modular housing initiative.
Move receipt? Second.
Comments, questions?
Well, I'll bring forward the other motion after, after we've received this.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Second motion?
Is that we create a listing to communicate with the public opportunities for partnerships in affordable housing development. So one of the benefits of the provincial program is that they will, they have a dedicated fund for providing 24/7 staffing supports for supportive housing. So while a lot of this is directed towards getting people off the street who are currently on the street, there is also a considerable amount of their programming that's aimed at providing affordable housing to assist people who are at risk of becoming homeless, which includes seniors, people with disabilities, anyone on a fixed income for whom rents may become unaffordable over time.
Second or to that motion we had? Good, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next letter in our list of correspondence is the 5.5 email from Capital Regional District regarding single-use plastic ban, plastic bag ban. This is the CRD staff report and draft model bylaw that they circulated to municipalities who may want to take interest or uptake on that particular bylaw. There is no real direct recommendation in here. This was, I set up by the CRD to provide a tool to municipalities who may want to take the plastic bag ban forward. So it's up to council to receive or to put in, back to a different kind of discussion for more information, but we also have a second letter coming up from the city of Victoria, so. Counselor Nol?
Yes, I would like to move that the council instruct staff to adapt the CRD bylaw to Callwood and bring it forward for public discussion and adoption. And I will go on to say that countries as backwards and poor as Burkina Faso in Africa have banned plastic bags and are doing very well with it. If we can't manage that in a high-tech, highly-rich community, then we're really in trouble. Plastic bags are a never-ending source of pollution. They get into the ocean, they choke the oceans, they kill the fish, they take inordinate amounts of landfill space, and they are entirely unnecessary. And I would also say that I much prefer the draft provided by the CRD to Victoria's draft. Victoria's draft has some horrendous penalties and so forth, and I really question how much Callwood is going to be spending on enforcing $100 fines on people that distribute plastic bags.
Second? Discussion by council? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? The next one, 5.6, is in fact the letter from the city of Victoria, again, bringing their draft bylaw out to, I'm not sure if that one was actually passed through the city of Victoria at this time, but they were bringing it as a draft out there as comparison.
Move receipt?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 5.7, there's a letter before us from the Royal Canadian Legion. I had hoped that we'd be able to have somebody come in to answer any of your questions, but I think it's fairly straightforward. They unfortunately have their meetings on the same Monday, Tuesday kind of combination that we have ours, so there was no one available. So what they're looking for is a contribution, this is the first time that the Legion has undertaken a Christmas dinner in the West Shore area, and they're looking to hold that on December 18th, which again is another slated council meeting night for us. But nonetheless, they're expecting 300 to 350 people, and they're wondering if there's a way for us to participate. Estimated cost for the event is $2,600. We provide them with a $2,500 grant for purposes of Remembrance Day ceremony costs. And it has been noted by finance that there is approximately $875 left remaining in the grant fund that council has discretion on. So with that, I will leave it to you, counsel. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I'm not aware of anything else that's coming forward. We're nearing the end of the year. The grant funding that's remaining, the $875, I think would be well-spent on this initiative. It would certainly serve our community well to have a Christmas dinner, so I'd like to move that we grant them the $875 at our discretion today.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Nol?
Just curious, that won't go very far to funding the whole project. I was wondering if they had received a response from Langford yet.
I'm not aware, but they, the same letter of request went out to a number of the municipalities that they serve, so my feeling is that probably it's been dealt with at their end as well. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I totally am supportive. I would think that this may be an annual request, so it might be something that we might want to think about during budget discussions, automatically including, because I suspect if we fund it once, that will be asked again, and it might just need to be a regular part of the budget.
Any other discussion? Counselor Day?
Just when they, when we say, it covers about a third of the costs of the meal that they, as they've presented it, so there are a couple more municipalities who could certainly be approached to participate in that, and I don't see why they wouldn't. I know they may not be prepared this year to do that, so hopefully some other sponsors will be found.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Under New Business Planning and Land Use Report from Planner in Regards to Federal Smart Cities Challenge, Smart South Island Plan.
I'll defer to Counselor Martin, who is our council rep on this project.
I was gonna.
Thank you.
Coin toss?
So, yeah, it's myself and also Dennis Carlson who attended this last meeting and who wrote this lovely report for us. I just, this is, again, just more information than anything else for council and, I guess, for the public. We are working on a smart city grant. Smart City Grant is a federal program. If you look on page two under the background, you can see there's one prize of $50 million, which will be available to a large city, two prizes of $10 million for mid-sized communities, which we're going to qualify for as a greater region. So you can see, under 2.2, you can see the list of the people who are participating right now, basically Victoria, Sanage, Oak Bay, Esqway, Mountview, Royal, Callwood, Central Sanage, North Sanage, Sydney Highlands, Songhees Nations, the Victoria Foundation, and the Greater Victoria Public Library. We're still in the early stages of identifying what the needs are of our specific community. The group itself identified five major areas to focus on: transportation and mobility, housing, economic resilience, environment, and health and wellness. The real reason this report is here this evening is to draw your attention to the November, and I just want to get the date right for you guys.
25th?
Thank you. November 25th, at the Victoria Conference Center. It's going to be the first event of the two-part series. It's also going to be available online, so you'll be able to webcast it, and you'll also be able to participate, so you'll actually be able to vote and contribute if you just get online. I do not have any of the online information yet. I don't know if it's available, but I'm sure it's going to become available soon. The speaker I've never heard of, but is supposedly a very world-renowned person, he's actually coming in from Argentina, and when the discussions have begun, they were quite excited from a planning standpoint that this person is pretty cutting-edge. So if anyone in council and anyone in the city is interested in seeing what our city could look like in 15 to 25 years, this would be a great symposium to attend. So that's all I have to contribute right now. After the 25th, what will happen is that information will be gathered, it will be put into a report which will basically guide the second workshop. After the second workshop, it will, they will fine-tune what we will actually apply for and what we will do. The feeling was they didn't want to actually make a decision on what we wanted to apply for until we got public input. So that's why every, all the categories are quite broad and generic right now, and it'll become more specific as the public shares. And that is all.
So just to touch back on that symposium, November the 25th, 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM at the conference center. Does an interested person have to RSVP?
Great question.
So we have a bit of things to find out, and perhaps maybe Sandra, we could ask you to post up on our community page and put it out that way if they.
It's actually on our website, and there is a link to an Eventbrite. You are supposed to register for it, and it says that seating is limited, so.
Okay.
People should get on it.
Yeah, they're saying 300 people.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Counselor Martin? None? Okay, thank you, that's, receive for information? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next one, 6.2, Transportation Public Infrastructure Report in Regards to Asset Management Service Level Agreement. This is agreement with the CRD. Who's taking it?
Your Worship, thank you. This is a contract that we had first contemplated last year during the budget deliberations so that we could put in place appropriate tools for us to do asset management. So the intent is to use a GIS system to start cataloging all of our assets and preparing ourselves for a regular asset management system. ESRI happens to be the product that we focused on as being the ideal product for us to do our GIS system. It just so happens that the CRD is using ESRI and has about 70% of our assets already mapped on their GIS system. So for us, it was a really good opportunity to explore using their hosting, and we would just buy user licenses to access that information and further populate it. So that's what the agreement essentially does. It's not a service level that we would typically have with a regional government, it is a contract. And so we, this contract is for one year with optional one-year renewals. We think at the staff level that this is a really good opportunity for us to do something collaborative and avoid having to duplicate costs, because the CRD already has a very good GIS server, they have very good GIS technicians that we can learn from, and they already have a good base map for us to work from. So all we need to do is start use, getting into the specifics of our roads, our sewer lines, things like that. I think that's about it for now. The reason it's back here is when we contemplated this at budget, we did not, we weren't clear enough in our communication that this was going to be an ongoing cost. So the budget contemplated one-time costs, so we have enough money for this year, but we don't have enough money for 2018. So it'll be a 2018 budget discussion for ongoing costs, but we felt it was important we came to council for this issue because it wasn't explicitly clear in the budget when we talked about it.
And I understand from discussion that there is a considerable cost savings in managing things in this way, where we're piggybacking on an existing opportunity than recreating it.
Yes, Your Worship, I believe we, I'm not the technical guru on this issue, but I believe we would be looking at having to buy our own server and all of the appropriate licenses to manage that server and have the expertise here as well, which we don't have. So it really is, from our perspective, in these early stages, a great opportunity for us.
And we're under the gun from the province to get the asset management taken care of. Any questions to staff on this one?
I would move the recommendation.
Counselor Day, second or first?
Second.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. Just, I am just curious about a couple things. Process-wise, obviously, it wasn't in our five-year plan last year, maybe should have been. So when will we adjust that five-year plan? Will we just adjust it during the budget cycle for 2018?
Correct, yes. So we have the funds in 2017, but we did not, where we made the mistake is we didn't show the ongoing costs in 2018 forward.
Right. And we haven't used anywhere near the amount of money that was set aside for it either, so we're certainly fine in terms of the budget envelope, but where I have a little bit of difficulty with this one is because I would have anticipated that asset management was part of the regular duties of the engineering department, so I'm just curious about, I understand when we need new software or new hardware, we put those requests out and it's part of our budget deliberations. But this is, in essence, kind of taking it outside of that process, so I'm just a little wondering why, you know, this is a normal thing that the engineering department would normally do, and yes, we needed to put a little bit more money in because we knew there was some costs associated with it. I'm just wondering, on a go-forward basis, if it's appropriate for it to be broken out like this, or isn't this just part of what we do?
Your Worship, I think, whether, I think the question is, where should the data be housed? And I, at this, at this stage in the way technology is handling data now, it's almost irrelevant. As long as, you know, with Canadian FOIPA laws, as long as the data is housed in Canada, it really doesn't matter anymore where physically is located. It is an engineering responsibility, but it's also a finance responsibility. So it's engineers, it's the engineering responsibility to catalog and maintain, and it's finances' responsibility to record. So they have to record the asset, and they also have to record the depreciation, and they have to make sure that there's sufficient funds set aside to do the ongoing maintenance. So part of the process was determining what was the best product for us to catalog that information and do ongoing tracking of maintenance and life, lifecycle of those assets, and the determination was that it was ESRI that we would use.
Okay, so I just, I think that answered my question. The only question that's left then, I guess is pretty moot, but it's just about where, you know, we're making this decision now to let a contract weigh at the end of the fiscal year completely outside of our budget program. So I just have a little bit of difficulty in that, you know, that it kind of puts this one up there at the top. That might be fine, that's kind of where we put asset management last year when we were doing our budget planning. But at the same time... But at the same time, I'm a little bit uncomfortable because that's not generally how we do our budget stuff, right? We do our budget all at the same time so that everything has that equal opportunity to be given what weighting council deems is appropriate to its priority.
Your worship, this actually was discussed and presented at the 2017 budget. Our failure was in carrying it forward in 2018, 2019, 2020. This is a one-year contract, so the contract that's in front of you today is funded through the 2017 budget process. What we need to do is make sure that we show it as an ongoing operating cost in future years, which is what we didn't do, and we're going to correct that in the 2018 budget process. If council says no next year for financial reasons, then we'll cancel the contract at the end of November 2018 and go a different direction depending on the direction that we receive from council during budget. But right now, we think this is the right direction, and we'll present that at budget for council to consider.
Thank you. Have councillor Logan and councillor Noll?
Thank you, worship. Congratulations to staff. I think this is exactly what the taxpayer would expect if there's something that's already in use, that we can piggyback on, all the better. And I think the grumpy taxpayers would be just as happy to report that we're making use of existing technology. My question is, is there a possible risk to the municipality in terms of, should the CRD say, no, we're either changing programmes or we're no longer interested in giving you access? Or if at the end of this one-year contract, we decide to go a different direction, do we have the ability to extract the information that we've deposited with their system?
Without getting into the technicalities, yes, we do. It's, keep in mind, most of the base map information already comes from the CRD today. And any new information is inputted by us, and we would continue to own it. It would just be housed off-site, essentially.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councillor Noll?
Yes, thank you. I support this on several levels. The first is that we have made asset management something that's important, and we've been told it's supposed to be important to us. This will provide a shortcut into getting more happening and has the potential of actually saving us money in the long run. The second thing is, you read the agreement carefully. Item number one point zero, this agreement shall be a term of one year, starting October first, 2017, ending September thirtieth, 2018. The agreement may be renewed annually with agreement of both parties. So it gives me a little bit more comfort than the standard CRD service provision. So for one year, I think it's a worthy experiment to try. If at the end of that year it doesn't work, we're probably no further behind than we are now.
Okay.
Your worship, I should add that to date, the engineering staff have had several meetings with CRD GIS staff, and they have been extremely impressed with the effort that they've put into this project so far. And even though we haven't signed the contract, they've been working in good faith that we were going to, and they've done a lot of work on that basis so far.
Great. Thank you very much. With that recommendation to proceed with this, somebody on the recommendation and a second or please?
No. We are.
Okay. The one, my machine jumped reports. There we go. Then, all those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. Moving on where I jumped to, I'm not booked. We are Finance and Admin, six point three point one, report from Building Inspections and Bylaw in regards to the management and protection of urban forest with the city of Callwood. Is that, spread that way?
Thank you, worship. Through the official community plan process, it had become apparent that there was concern about protecting the urban forest within the city of Callwood. So staffer brought a bylaw forward in which to allow the city to establish the authority for regulating the urban forests, the ability to issue permits and set related fees, and also including requirements for replacement trees and security for their provisions and maintenance. The bylaw also provides provisions to bring unnecessary harm during construction as well. So what a staffer is recommending that we move forward with the bylaw. Staff also recognise it is a sensitive issue, and we feel that we need to put something in place for the management of the urban forest. One thing I'd like to stress is, it's not a tree-cutting bylaw, but it's a management of the urban forest and the protection of that urban forest. It doesn't restrict that you can't cut trees, but we're just regulating how you proceed in that manner.
Questions of staff? Councillor Noll? Move the recommendation, second or?
I would move the recommendation with the following change, that the final and further that staff undertake community consultation to develop, to further develop the Urban Forest Bylaw number seventeen ten, two thousand and seventeen, within three months. And I would like to speak to that when we had a second or.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to councillor Noll?
Now, as a landowner and my wife being semi-retired landscaper, I have serious problems with this bylaw. There are an awful lot of things in here I don't like. Having said that, the OCP process has shown that the city of, people of Callwood really consider protecting trees of vital importance, and right now, we do not have a mechanism to do that. So I'm supporting this on the basis that it be reviewed within three months. One of my biggest concerns as a private landowner is, I went through the requirements of this, and we take a hypothetical case where I have a thirty-centimetre diameter at breast height tree in my yard, that's classified as protected by the city of Callwood. The procedure for me to get rid of this tree is, one, I have to do a land title search to prove that land is mine. Two, I have to provide a tree site plan. Three, I have to pay a seventy-five-dollar application fee, which is non-refundable. Four, I need to file an arborist's report on a single dead tree. There is an exception from that if I can convince staff through photographs that the tree is indeed in bad health. So that number four might not be required. Number five, a tree protection plan. Number six, a tree replacement plan. Number seven, an engineer's report regarding slope stability and so forth for a single tree. Even Sanage doesn't require that. Number eight, a fee of seventy-five dollars per tree. Number nine, security of five hundred dollars to cover my replacement trees, which the city is going to hold for at least twelve months. Number ten, plant three replacement trees at a height of one point five metres and maintain for at least a year. Researching that with my landscaping wife, such trees will cost me in the area of one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars each, and often, smaller trees do a much better job of survival of transplanting than larger ones, so I question the need for that. Further, planted under the supervision of an arborist landscape architect or a registered professional biologist. Planting a tree isn't hard, they do it in the forest all the time, and they don't have supervision of any of these peoples. They have a guy with a bag of trees and a shovel. So again, those are totally unnecessary. There's another section in there that states which trees have to be replaced with what. Now, what bothers me is if you get a permit to have a city tree removed, you have to buy fewer replacement trees than if you remove a tree on your own land. Fewer, not more. Again, that's a bad section of the bylaw. And I also have reservations with section sixteen in the bylaw, where it gives the city the opportunity to enter any lot that is subject to this bylaw, which means that any tree in Callwood, any lot in Callwood with a tree on can be entered by the city and inspected without the owner's permission. And that, to me, is invasive and totally unnecessary. I can see if I had a permit to remove a tree or a complaint against me, then the city might have a reason to move in and look, but it leaves an awful lot of questions. It's way too onerous for a single-family home. And finally, it leaves me the question to ask, what about all the businesses in Callwood that are doing landscaping? Where does that leave them if they want to prune or move trees or so on so forth? There's an awful lot of improvements. Only reason I'm supporting it is it's better than what we've got in place, and it will be reviewed within three months.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Councillor Day?
Thank you. I appreciate the comments from councillor Noll, and I really do hope that we can create a process in a timely way, knowing that Christmas is just around the corner. I know that's going to be a bit of a fly in the ointment in terms of getting public consultation done. But there's a couple of things that I noted in reviewing the proposal so far, and especially around the approved trees for replacement trees, there's no evergreens, no firs, no cedars, the, well, I guess you could classify the magnolia as an evergreen. The magnolias are more temperamental to this region, so they're not what we generally think of as Callwood's trees. If you were to, you know, ask a kindergartner to draw a picture of Callwood's trees, they would draw you a picture of what looks sort of like a Christmas tree, like a cedar or a fir. Those trees are not on this list. We're talking about maples and ginkgos and things that are smaller and more controllable, and those might be great trees on small, tight boulevards for some new developments. They might be just the ticket in some places, but I think we're trying to keep some of what Callwood looks like now in place for the future. So my hope is that maybe we can have a task force to help with this consultation process, but I leave that to staff to bring forward what they think is the best idea for that consultation. And I certainly don't want to create an administrative nightmare that doesn't add up to a good result. We want the best result in the simplest way possible. So I'm sure that our citizens can help us identify what result they would like to see, and our staff can help us to fine-tune this so that it's functional and the least invasive. As councillor Noll pointed out, this, you know, coming onto anyone's private property at any time for no particular reason doesn't quite seem right to either. So I will be supporting this coming forward. I do think that it's absolutely true that trees are important to people in Callwood, and it's a difficult area to get right, so I look forward to the process.
Any other comments? Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I will be supporting this, and I'm not going to repeat exactly what everybody else has said, but I think this is a little unique in that normally you're looking at a bylaw to be completely done, and that you pass it. And then, really what we're doing is that this is a start-off spot and a jump-off spot, and as councillor Noll has mentioned, we're going to look at reviewing this within the next three months because there are definitely concerns, I think, have been expressed by not only council but by members of the public about this bylaw, and I think there is some discussion and some growth and movement in this bylaw that needs to occur. But we need to also be realistic that if we don't put something like this in place, there's always that fear that we'll see a run on a whole bunch of trees being cut. And for that reason in itself is the reason I'll be supporting this motion this evening.
Anyone else? All those in favour? Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Moving on then to six point three point two, Greater Victoria Labour Relations Association, I need to appoint or reaffirm a director and an alternate director for a one-year term that will begin on December the fourth through December twenty eighteen. Presently, we have councillor Martin with GVLR and backed up by councillor Trace. Open to nominations from council.
Your worship, I'm prepared to nominate, to reaffirm our appointments, councillor Martin and councillor Trace for the next year.
And I'd ask for them to yea or nay that, first of all. Yep, good. A second or then? All those in favour? Opposed? Question?
Not opposed, I just had a question on the terms of the appointments. The primary director has to be a member of council, and there's an election happening before the...
And that happens to all of us, so we have to address that should something change at that point. With that, all those in favour? Opposed, motion carried? Yeah, we're well aware of that next October thing. Item number two is the appointment again for a board trustee for the Greater Victoria Library, Public Library. Our present director is councillor Martin, looking to council for nominations or recommendations for an appointment.
I'll move that we reappoint councillor Martin.
Are you willing to do that?
He's well read.
He's well read.
With that, all those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. Moving into another discussion, folks, in regards to implementation of committee of the whole meeting structure. This is a follow-up from the last meeting, which was in May. So we finally have something relatively concrete before us with a number of appendices. I will leave it up to staff if we're back. You got your water? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't go into too much detail because I either have a choice of talking or breathing tonight, and I think I'm going to choose breathing. So what we did try to do, though, is taking from council's direction at the May twenty-ninth special committee of the whole meeting, we took the details of those minutes where different concerns or comments were expressed about the proposal to do a trial of a committee of the whole structure in place of the current standing committee structure, that will probably carry us into the summertime, if that's the way that we go, and revisit it in the summertime so that we can determine as a city what our actual committee structure is going to be moving forward, especially with the elections taking place in October. So we really do need to decide what we're doing and have the structure in place. So there were a number of things that were brought up by the council members at that meeting. Staff was asked to go back and come up with what a layout of a committee structure might look like, and we tried to do that by providing a copy of a calendar for the twenty eighteen year, which shows committee of the holes on the, held on the first Monday and the third Monday. It also shows the council meetings and advisory planning committee meetings. It doesn't show any of our other select or ad hoc committee meetings that we have. And council asked for a number of the things, what the financial implications might be going after ten o'clock. We don't really feel that the financial implications are too high in that most people that would attend a committee of the whole meeting are probably the senior management team. The recordings, the secretary always has to be paid for. That can be anywhere from a hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for a meeting that might be two hours to five hours. If we do have union members attend, of course, there would be overtime for them, but it's hard to predetermine what those costs might look like. Council wanted to know how we'd keep the public involved, and under the committee of the whole structure, the, one of the appendices that's attached speaks about public participation. Some of the frequently asked questions or the terms of reference speak about having public participation at the beginning of a committee of the whole meeting, allowing the... allowing the public to make comment on each agenda item up until the committee itself starts talking about the agenda item. And at the end of the meeting, allowing the public to comment one more time on what they heard that night, or what their thoughts are on what the recommendations may be coming out of the Committee of the Whole meeting. And we provided more information than what council asked for, but what we were trying to do is help demonstrate to council and to the public how all the different things would play themselves out. What is Committee of the Whole? What's happening to the standing committees? What's the mandate? What types of things will go to Committee of the Whole as opposed to items going straight to council? Those types of things. So I'm hoping the report was clear enough, not only for members of council, but for the public as well when they read it. So I think for tonight, what we really need to do is listen to what council's comments are on what was put forward, what their thoughts are on moving forward with Committee of the Whole or not, or requesting more information. But we do have to start sooner than later. So if we are going to have a trial at all, we actually have time left. If we're not going to have a trial, then we need to determine what we're going to be doing with our standing committees or revising our standing committees, whatever council's decision may be.
I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Second for discussion, please. Counselor Nolte, discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. So in trying to envision what Committee of the Whole would be like, one of the things that concerned me was kind of the complete dissolution of our committee system. So, you know, what was good about the committee system was that we knew that, for example, Protective Services, it's an easy one to come up with. You know exactly what type of things are going to be on the agenda. And if you had a concern as a resident about, you know, law enforcement in your neighborhood, or bylaw services in your neighborhood, or fire protection, you knew where to come and speak in a much less formal setting. And it was really clear that you were in a less formal setting and could make your points well-understood. Lots of opportunity for that discussion because you had the luxury of time because the meeting was strictly and only about that. And it wasn't, you know, a big weighty agenda that was, you know, you were taking up time that could maybe belong to something else. So when I envisioned the possible new system, I had sort of imagined putting several agendas together on one night so that instead of having, you know, seven meetings to go to in a month, there was two. And, you know, one meeting would cover three subject areas, and the other meeting would cover the other four. This, as I read the report, made a lot of sense in terms of council being able to discuss items. But it didn't necessarily address the issue of making it easier for the public to be engaged and involved. And I know that there was talk about trying to make sure that, you know, it's very clear that we're in committee, not at council. So I just have some difficulty with the concept that some things would just go directly to council rather than come to Committee of the Whole and then go to council. And I know we don't want it to just be a dress rehearsal, but we also do want to allow that opportunity for public input. So I'm just a little concerned that it seems like there's kind of a move towards getting rid of that committee meeting and not necessarily replacing it with the Committee of the Whole structure.
Counselor Nolte?
Having been around Callwood long enough, I've been through both setups. The old Committee of the Whole was definitely a dress rehearsal for council, and as such, we don't want to go down that road. The idea of limiting the agenda to complicated items, I think, is a good one. I think also that if an item comes to council that council feels uncomfortable with, we can immediately refer it to Committee of the Whole. So that puts another couple weeks delay in it. But if it's a complicated issue that requires extensive discussion, I think that would be good. Again, I have Counselor Day's concerns with the length of the meetings and whether the public is going to sit through them. I think Pat suggested we have a public participation, both at the beginning and the end of the meetings. That would be fabulous because that gives the public a part to say, the chance to say its part. And it comes to committee and gives the public a chance to comment on what committee has come to a conclusion on. So I think that's a very good way to go. And we have to definitely make it very clear to public that we're sitting as committee. Maybe we could come in in clown outfits or something on committee nights and...
It only happened once, or maybe twice. Come on.
Anyway, again, it's something I think is worth trying. It looks like it's better formatted than the old Committee of the Whole. Certainly, public participation in the standing committees has been extremely limited unless there's something really controversial happening. So maybe if we throw one controversial item into each Committee of the Whole meeting, we can encourage people to come out and yell at us. So I'm really willing to give this a trial. My personal opinion is the standing committees are not accomplishing, as far as the public participation, what they intended to.
Thank you. Any other? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I have voiced my concerns in the past about Committee of the Whole. I'm not a fan of Committee of the Whole. I actually like the committee structure more. But it does seem like it's the will of the majority of the council and staff, so I'm willing to be supportive and move forward in the next year and try it out. But I am opposed, but I'm not going to vote opposing because I think I'm willing to give it a shot, but I don't like it.
Skeptical? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. I'm, well, as council is aware, I was a fan of the committee structure as well. Is it, you know, it was more, it was intimate. We were able to have probably more of a frank discussion with residents on whatever their issues were. And, of course, my vision of the Whole Committee, the Whole structure is a bit tainted in that I, too, experienced both sides, and it was a hell of a slog when we had it before. I mean, it was, again, it was a dress rehearsal, but there was not a Committee of the Whole meeting that did not adjourn before midnight, or very few that adjourned before midnight. We made some pretty stupid decisions towards the end of the night. And, but I do recognize that we are a much different community and a much different council than the old days. So it was more politicized, I think, in the old days. People wanting to get on their soapbox to make a statement versus the last two terms, which have really matured, I think, as a council and as a community, where we're more constructive in our dialogue and not necessarily here to make a political statement. So I think from that perspective, and staff putting some more rigor around the Committee of the Whole structure, and that this is a trial for the rest of this term, I'm trusting that there's going to be some evaluation probably early on in the next term to see how this worked. So, you know, I'm willing to support the recommendation moving forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then I'll just go on to say thank you to staff for the time spent because this was not an easy task to coordinate and collaborate all the information. And, yeah, two thumbs up there because it does take an awful lot of work. Many of the same comments, and I just wanted to let you know that it's not the mayor that chairs Committee of the Whole, so the onus will be on each and every one of you in your turns to manage the meeting timelines and public participation. But I envision not being a fan of Committee of the Whole of past experience, willing to give this a shot because I really believe that we can make it better. We can actually engage better with community in that kind of a format where it's somewhat less formal, that we give plenty of opportunity either, you know, before and the after of the meeting, even perhaps similarly as in a public hearing when you're introducing separate topics that you might, you know, be able to go back and visit if you see that there's a need for conversation. So looking forward to a pilot timeframe that we explore this and give it every shot to succeed and make the communication component of what we do in the public better. So if there are no other comments, Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just in terms of, I've heard a couple of references to the old Committee of the Whole dress rehearsal style and how long the meetings were. And I'd just like to, I don't know, throw my two cents' worth in about whether or not this works isn't necessarily about the format. It's a lot about the willingness of the members of the council to operate with real openness. And I really appreciate that, for example, tonight Counselor Martin has reservations about this, but it's a pilot program, and he said, you know, he's willing to try it out. I think that's great, and it's that sort of spirit that will possibly make it work. But it's about that openness and that engagement and the willing to have the discussion when it needs to happen. So I hope that we will all remember that and support one another. You know, if something is really a strongly-held conviction by one member of council, and we need to give that extra time for it to be referred back to Committee of the Whole when something comes up, I hope we will do that. And it's probably that attitude that is more likely to make this successful than really which format we follow. So just in appreciation for the fact that this council has tried to, with diverse views, get along and engage our citizens so that when a decision is made, there's nothing that has been left unsaid.
Great. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Before we move on, though, I did make a note under legal considerations, and I'm going to go to staff because it may appear that we need to put an additional recommendation up here. It said, "Should council resolve to put Committee of the Whole process into effect, it is recommended that this be directed by way of council resolution," which we just did. And it says, "It is recommended that notice of regular Committee of the Whole meetings follow the requirements of 16.1, a procedure bylaw." And, oh, that part we did. "Once the resolution has been adopted to implement Committee of the Whole, we should dissolve the existing standing committees." Do you need that now, or is that something to come?
Your worship, you know, one of the criticisms that councils had over this past year of struggling through this process has been the lack of clarity to the public about what's happening with standing committees. So we think that it's in everybody's best interest to dissolve them as they are because if council wants to bring them back, they'd have to be brought back under a new mandate anyway because the mandate of the existing ones are very problematic. So it's certainly our recommendation, and it's the mayor's responsibility, there are standing committees, to make that determination whether you want to dissolve them. But it's certainly our recommendation that they be dissolved. And then if council or the mayor would like to bring them back, that we would be directed to bring back contemporary mandates for those committees.
So is that a motion for me to make or for council to make?
Your worship, it's not a motion. It's simply a edict from the mayor.
A statement, a statement to be made, then? That in the unanimous support of moving to a Committee of the Whole pilot, that we will be dissolving existing standing committees? And that can be revisited, you know, at the end of the pilot project?
At any time.
At any time?
The mayor can establish standing committees at any time.
All right. Such said, and perhaps, Sandra, we can maybe put up an explanation as we move into this transition so that it clarifies things? Thank you. Moving into Section 7 of our agenda, which is bylaws. The first one before us is bylaw number 1710. First, second, and third readings, please, for Urban Forest Bylaw Number 1710-2017. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? In that we've passed first, second, and third, I am asking for a special meeting of council for Thursday, November 16th, at 5:30 to consider adoption. I need to poll council at this time for attendance availability. Counselor Trace?
Is this Thursday?
Yep. Counselor Logan?
I should be here.
Martin?
Yeah, I have West Shore at 7:00.
At 7:00?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Nolte? And Counselor Chong, I will identify when she is back this week. With that, then, direction to staff to proceed with the agenda. Thank you. Moving on to bylaw number 1709. Again, first, second, and third readings for MTI, bylaw number 1134-2010, amendment number 8.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.3, bylaw number 1702, for final reading. This one is for 543 Delora, Callwood, Main Sewer, Local Area Service Establishment and Loan, bylaw number 598-2001, amendment number 61.
Move final?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 7.4, bylaw number 1703, for final reading. This is for the same address, 543 Delora, but it is Callwood, West Sewer, Local Area Service Establishment and Loan, bylaw number 625-2001, amendment number 46.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 7.5, again, a sewer-local-area bylaw, number 1706, for first, second, and third readings for 3438 Fulton Road.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Same property, again, this one being first, second, and third readings for Callwood, West Sewer, Local Area Service Establishment and Loan, 625-2001, 47, for 3438 Fulton Road.
Move introduction? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second?
Any discussion at this point? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Lastly, on our agenda this evening is bylaw number 1708, for first, second, and third readings. This one for 2060 Suk Road, Callwood, Main Sewer, Local Area Service bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization, number 598-2001, amendment number 63.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? There are release of in-camera resolution... There are release of in-camera resolutions for October the 10th in regards to the Bylaw Services Department Level Operational Review and two expressions of interest on Advisory Planning Commission Youth Appointment. Looking for a release of those two resolutions?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. The resolutions were already released from in-camera, so we're just reporting them in the public meeting now.
Reporting them in here? Okay. All right. So this evening's one earlier will show up next meeting?
No, they will show up in the meeting.
Do I need to, do I need to release now in public for that one?
Your worship, I think it would be appropriate, yes.
So that council is the hiring of a financial director, Christopher Payne, so looking for a motion to release?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move adjournment?
Nobody wants to hear? You're all...